All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and also a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you very much. Now we're a regular town council meeting. The roll call, Mrs. George, please.
Regula Sineer?
Here.
Karen Carlson?
Here.
Karen McGee?
Here.
Deborah Bacon?
Here.
Brad Shipp?
Here.
Graham Waters?
Present.
Nicholas Moore?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Fairman, would you be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyway, we're all standing just above our heads a moment if you dare to. Dear Lord, we ask for guidance as we begin this town council meeting. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the Thanksgiving holiday that hopefully most people, or if not all people, enjoy as we look forward to the Christmas holidays and Hanukkah holidays and the family holidays as we head into December. Again, guide us in the right direction. Amen. And the evacuation plans, Mr. Fairman?
It's an emergency to two exits in a rear. Just go to your radio, I'll have to pick up that.
Thank you. All right, President's comments, just a couple. One, we have a couple upcoming events that as we head into the holiday season. I know it's been advertised in the Kent County Times, for those that read it, possibly the reminder as well, but on Saturday, December 2nd, and also Sunday, December 3rd, there is Christmas at Spell Hall, which is again the homestead of Major General Nathaniel Green. This has happened in the past years and it's scheduled again to celebrate the Christmas season, which is at 50 Taff Street. I think most of you know where the homestead is, Nathaniel Green. On Saturday, it's scheduled from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on Sunday, it is scheduled from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. They are going to have Yuletide celebration, Christmas tours. They'll have live Christmas and holiday music. They're suggesting adult donations of $5.00 a person and children, $3.00 a person. Festive time should be had by all, and if you're available and if you haven't taken it in before, it's something that you probably should do and will always remember it. Secondly, we have, I had made a note because I heard it on our radio channel 95.1, it's here in Coventry, and a councilperson with an excellent radio voice mentioned that on December 8th at 6:00 p.m., Coventry Parks and Recreation are going to have a Christmas celebration, lighting the Christmas tree. And I think I heard that Santa arrives at 6:00 p.m. next Friday, December 8th. And if I could defer to my Vice President next to me, I know he's got a few other scheduled upcoming dates for the Coventry Parks and Rec. So, Mr. Levasinier?
Well, you know, just go over, I went to Raina here to be the flyer. Do you have any extra flyers to put up yet? She's got some in the back over there, flyers, which tell us about the Christmas celebration there, the lighting of the tree on December 8th. That's all I've done with that there.
Oh, okay.
It's strictly with the information that Raina's been giving me to try to get out there. Well, I've seen it, actually, I saw it posted up online and that's hopefully folks will, it's always been a success in the past. And with it, and now, I didn't see it before, but I do see you've got the middle school chorus is going to be there again, they always do a great job.
And if I could ask, Raina, and also, all the different Christmas trees, they all are chosen? Is it correct again that-
They're all being sponsored and decorated-
Sponsored, yeah.
-with different community groups?
Exactly. Okay, so that's same as past years, and that's really, really nice. They usually have a good turnout, so hopefully the weather will cooperate, and December 8th is right around the corner, so good luck to you. And again, anybody that has, have kids or just want to come and feel like kids or grandkids, I would recommend it. As far as President's comments go, I'm done with comments tonight. So, we have the, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the town council minutes from the November 14th meeting. And I know we do have that before us. And at this time, I'll, you know, accept a motion to, or accept, take a motion to accept, is what I'm trying to say.
Motion approved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right, and is there any discussion or comments regarding the minutes of December? I mean, November 14th?
Just a bit of clarification.
All right.
On page 2, third paragraph, the warning lights, yes, there will be warning lights at Waterman Hill and Maple Valley Roads. There's also going to be flashing lights warning north and southbound traffic traveling on 102. So that was a little bit different. And also, no, that's it, that's it, yeah. So just that those flashing lights will be for the 102 up and down the inclines.
Okay. Any other amendments or changes? If not, with that addition or amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes approved. Very good. Next, council updates. Well, I start to my far right, Mr. McGee?
Okay, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, spent some time with family. I don't have a lot to say. January, I'm still planning on a get-together with the Councilman Levasinier. Councilman, is it the 13th or the 9th? I got the dates confused.
13th.
The 13th of January. Over here at the chamber, we have coffee, donuts, and have some discussion and look at a think tank, get some ideas of the way, direction that the town should go, and some suggestions. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGee. Mrs. Bacon, District 5?
Yeah, real quick, on Thanksgiving, I had a wonderful Thanksgiving, I hope you all did also. Unfortunately, the residents that live around 75 Airport Road did not. I received very many phone calls, emails, I mean, text messages regarding the snow of asphalt on the day of Thanksgiving. And apparently, it has been going on since Thanksgiving. They haven't received any relief from the noxious odor of asphalt. I'm not sure what is going on, but could I suggest a meeting? Could we meet with possibly a couple of the neighbors, with the town solicitor, town manager, and maybe the police chief, and have some sort of a plan of action? I mean, I'm not sure what to do about this.
Sure, if you work with the residents that are in touch with you and with scheduling, we'd set up a meeting of all departments.
Okay, terrific, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Carlson, District 1?
Yes, I'd love to read an email that some of you may have gotten from me today, my regular emails, but then Google cut me off. Apparently, I sent too many emails today, so it cut me off and a lot of them bounced back. Anyway, for the first time since 1996, the Coventry Rams Peewee Squad has won the regional championship and will be playing for the national championship in Florida. The Rams will be representing New England, Rhode Island, and most prominently, Coventry. If there's ever a time to come together as a community in support of a team, this will be that time. So I wanted to announce that they're going to Florida, they're going to Disney, and they have a Go Find Me page. They are having a pasta dinner at the Cozy Grill on Tuesday, the 28th, which is tomorrow. 5:30 p.m., tickets are $15. They'll have raffles and you'll be able to wish the players well before they leave. And also, the superintendent of schools has approved Jersey Day on November 30th, which is Thursday, so if you've got kids, tell them they can wear football jerseys that day. And also, if you would like to get newsletters from me, I do send out meeting announcements and agendas, just see me afterwards and I'll take your email address and add you to my list. Other than that, oh, I, the other thing I wanted to ask was, we're probably about halfway through the sewer moratorium. I'd like to ask that on the next agenda, we have an update on what's going on. We had 100 to 20-day moratorium we set at the high school at our sewer meeting. Do you have-
On the December 11th council meeting, generally?
Yeah, I think we need some kind of update what's going on. We're about halfway through at this point, so I'd like to ask for that in the next agenda.
Sure.
It's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levasinier?
Well, glad Mrs. Carlson mentioned the Coventry Rams, because I was going to do that. As a matter of fact, I was a coach on the 1996 team that went to Disney, as well as my son was a player. And Mr. Anderson, sitting in the audience there, coached with me to a couple of state championships on our Coventry Junior Peewees. So we're always very proud of our football players doing that, and they've done a great job. And Drew, I want to reiterate, please visit their Go Find Me page. They have to raise a lot of money in a short amount of time to get down to Disney, so. And so, my official congratulations to the Rams. District 2, the last time I mentioned, you know, a lot of residents with concerns about the large trucks traveling Calventown. And I had received a call from the Safety Director, Matt Leonard, from JR Venegro, and requesting if we could try to put a meeting together. And I'm meeting with Mr. Leonard and two of the gentlemen from the situat town council to see if we can do something about shortening that trip and getting them back on Hope Furnace Road and saving the trip all the way through town. So I've got a meeting scheduled next week for that. And, let me see, there was something else. Uh, yeah, it's, the meeting that Kerry was talking about in January, I'm also doing one on December 9th, going back to a town hall meeting type of thing, a think tank, citizens get together just to talk about solutions and other things. Also, I'd like to reiterate in District 2, a lot of folks have been very concerned about a proposed gun range, which is going out off Town Farm Road. And that goes, I've been getting a lot of emails, a lot of calls from concerned citizens. And I reiterate to each of them that the zoning board makes that decision. And we should show up and express either your, you know, your concern one way or the other for that gun range. That's what I've got in District 2.
All right, thank you.
Okay, one more, um, thank you, Greg, because I forgot, I don't know how to grab gun range. That was part of my email issue today. That meeting is December 6th at 7 o'clock, right here. And tomorrow night, the school committee will be discussing the gun range and a possible resolution that they may send to the zoning board, but I don't know if that's happening. But they will discuss it if you want some public input tomorrow night, you're more than welcome. That meeting is at the high school, it's not here.
Okay, District 4 update. I basically have one that we've received notice on detour on Arnold Road. Due to the construction taking place on Arnold Road, a detour will have to be initiated on Tuesday, November 28th, which is tomorrow, through December 1st, 2017, which is Friday. Northbound traffic will take a right onto Johnson's Boulevard from Arnold Road. Traffic will then continue to Hopkins Hill Road. Traffic will then take a left on Hopkins Hill Road and continue down to Mulleden Turnpike or Division Street, depending on the driver's designation. The detour won't affect traffic heading south on our road. However, delays are expected and alternate routes are strongly suggested. So I wanted to get that in, because that's definitely District 4. And it's only going to be five, four days, but it's four days where you want to avoid the area if you can, otherwise you'll have to take the detour. All right, next on the agenda, we have a school department report. I think Mr. Pearson might be giving that, because I noticed him front row. Good evening, Mr. Pearson, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Off my report, but germane topic, Johnson Boulevard is, as we know, Hopkins Hill is on Johnson Boulevard, so I would just urge people taking that detour to drive carefully.
That's a good point, thank you.
All right, hopefully a short report, because I think I'm going to lose my voice halfway through. Thank you again. First of all, the Rhode Island Department of Education recently released our NECAF scores, the NECAF science results. And the results show that Coventry had the most significant increase in percentage of students who were proficient or better in the state. And at each level, Coventry performed above the state average. So some good news from the testing there. And it's worth noting that only two districts in the state showed a significant increase in the number of students scoring proficient, Coventry being one of them.
That's great.
So kudos out to the teachers and the students for working hard. Next of note is that Coventry Public Schools held a brief Liberty Tree dedication ceremony on Friday, October 27th, at the high school football field. Some of you were in attendance, thank you. We want to thank the Celebrate Coventry Committee for their support of the schools. It was a very nice ceremony, there's a nice little plaque that will be installed near the tree. Let's hope that tree grows, grows big and strong. On October 26th, at Coventry High School, teacher Lauren Hopkins, who teaches English Language Arts at Coventry High School, was named the Rhode Island winner of a 2018 Milken Educator Award. This national award recognizes and celebrates professionals who are furthering excellence in education. The award also provides each awardee an unrestricted cash award of $25,000. This year, the Milken Family Foundation honors up to 45 educators nationwide. So this is a very prestigious award. We're very proud that someone from Coventry received this award. From what I understand, historically, there's been several Coventry teachers over the years who've received this award. It shows, again, demonstrates the hard work they're putting out there to teach our students. Next up, the sixth annual Alan Shawn Feinstein Middle School Salute to Veterans Celebration and Pasta Dinner was held on Thursday, November 9th. The highlight of the night included the Korean War Veterans Color Guard and performances from the middle school band and chorus, as well as the Navy J ROTC cadets. Well over 100 veterans and their families attended the ceremony. And thank you to all who participated, but most importantly, thank you to our veterans who were able to attend, and even those who were not able to attend. And finally, on my list here, the Policy Subcommittee is set to begin developing an Administrator Compensation Review Policy. We expect to take that up at our next meeting to start looking at how our administrators are evaluated, compensated, and hopefully something, you know, sustainable over the long term. Expect to see some progress on this policy over the next few weeks. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. I was able to attend two of those events that you mentioned. It was the ceremony where the teacher was awarded the $25,000 check was electric. It was just, every seat was taken, all the students were there, the pep band and leaders, and it was really a good feeling. And again, real nice accolade for our town school department, and certainly her. I also went to the middle school salute to the service veterans. That, Mr. Blanchett always does a nice job, I believe I mentioned that at last council meeting, but thank you for mentioning it again. And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda, we have an update on the Department of Health and Services and Police Department building project. And I see Mr. Finnegan, our very capable chairperson of that committee, present. And thank you for coming back. I apologize for the note where six was, became seven. Hopefully, you were able to use that last hour. And I know Colonel McDonald's also here as well. So, it's all yours, sir. I know we, I think we have been given a handout, so go right ahead, Bill.
Okay, thank you. And that wasn't your error, I missed that line. The agenda did have the right time, I just did you right down to where I would be presenting, so. The committee wanted to give a brief update on where we're at with the project. And over the last couple of months, there's been numerous meetings to develop the needs and the use of the DHS and the Police Department facility that we'll be building. And we had users group, user groups from DHS and separately from the Police Department that they spent, they had a dozen or a couple of dozen meetings trying to work out the footprint of what they needed. They started with a sort of a wish list of everything that they'd like to see in it. And as the architect put rough numbers to it, we scaled it back to what was reasonable within our budget. And then we got a final consensus from both DHS and the Police Department of an acceptable floor plan that didn't give any of them everything that they wanted, but certainly was a vast improvement from where we are and was going to facilitate and handle all of their needs today and for the foreseeable future. Fortunately, along with that outline, or that floor plan and the square footage, we got the initial estimate that came in under our budget with an acceptable contingency amount within that plan. So we got sign off from both departments. And I signed off with Rouse, the architect, to begin the next phase of the design, which will allow us to go out to bid. There's going to be a 30% finalization of the plans, which will allow us to get a firm number to confirm that we're going to come in under budget. And once we get to that point, the bid documents will be finalized and we hope to be out to bid February to March of 2018, with construction beginning in April of 18 and completion by May of 19. So that was what the original forecast was. We took a little bit more time in the user meetings to make sure we covered everything, everyone that was going to be using the building, vetted all of that out. And we are well on our way, but the layout, the plan looks great. There's a couple of areas, I'm not sure, did that plan get, Bob here? Did that get here by any chance?
Um, no.
Okay, do you have a floor plan up there?
Yes.
Do you have the chart?
Yeah.
The timeline.
There's a floor plan that we have, and we could share if you're interested in seeing it, but it has a couple of major areas that could be expansion areas, and that would be in the courtyard of the existing building, where that would be one area for potential expansion, and then off the back. We don't feel that that's needed for the foreseeable future, but that's taken into account. The plan today does include the access road out to Sandy Bottom, and it does include an additional area for vehicle inspection and evidence storage that is outside of the existing footprint right now. So we believe it's a very comprehensive, everybody's on board with it, and we're moving forward.
That's, it's very encouraging, what you're telling us. And I know I was able to make most of the meetings, not all of them, but it seems like everybody's positive. And I know the chief, you were at that last meeting, actually, Coventry Lumber. I love, is that the floor plan that was shown, that meeting was pretty much, yeah, you were trying to-
No, there was some-
Something after that, two minor changes made after that. All right, well, if we could get a copy of that, that'd be perfect. We all appreciate seeing how it's progressing, that's for sure. Any council individuals have a question on Mr. Finnegan at this time, or progressing, outside of what he's told us?
I appreciate this, I've been asking a lot, people have been asking me how we've come along, so I appreciate this dramatic, and how, you know, where we're progressing and where we stand, so thank you.
We're on time and not over budget.
And that's-
It's a big one.
And that's a big one.
Two good ones.
Very good. Well, okay, if not, thank you, sir, for coming out. And we'll look forward to hearing additional news as it progresses. Thank you, Bill. All right. All right, so now we're down on the agenda to Section C, C1. Mrs. George, do you want to just explain what we have in front of us on this?
This is a public hearing for discussion or action regarding an application for additional hours for Dunkin' Donuts locations at 24 Coventry Choppers Park and Turnpike Donuts at 2370 New London Turnpike.
Okay, and I guess it is a public hearing, Mr. Donald? Shall we, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So basically, the meeting is open to the public for comments. And the locations, we did cover them, did we not? But let me just repeat, it's Main Street Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, 24 Coventry Choppers Park. And then the second location is the Turnpike Donuts, which is again Dunkin' Donuts, at 2370 New London Turnpike. We have requested recommendations from the Police Department and the Planning Department. And there are no objections to the issuance of the additional four hours at this time. I guess the additional hours for the night owls, what being 2:00 to 6:00 a.m.?
I'm thinking of 24 hours.
To make a 24-hour coffee and donuts and other goodies at Dunkin' Donuts.
Uh, Mr. President, I have to comment, I'd like to make-
Sure, sure. Right ahead.
The paperwork we have is a little bit confusing. Is it just the New London Turnpike location from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m.? Or is it both? Because I thought that the one at Choppers Park closes much early. I don't know what the normal, they don't close at 2:00 in the morning, am I, am I ever saying that? Well, I think it's for both of them. I think they just both wanted 24-hour picturing licenses, or lessons. I think it just extends the hours for each of them. So they're just both looking for a 24-hour operation. Yeah, at least for the license, whether they're, that they actually open or not. All right, thank you.
Okay, are there, are any of the proprietors here? Yes, okay. Would you like to state any additional information, or is it pretty self-explanatory?
Self-explanatory, other than the fact that we do close, oh, sorry.
Come on up, yeah, if you could just, for the record-
Sure.
Name an address, please.
James Lynch, 37 Overlook Drive, North of this town.
Okay.
And we do close early on Main Street, and it's for the early morning commute, versus staying open late on Main Street.
So you would be opening up at 2:00?
Open at 3:00. 4:00, okay. But close, yeah, probably 10:00 or 11:00.
Okay.
I think the regular license, the hours are what, 6:00 to-
Per Rhode Island State law, 6:00 a.m. to a-
To 2:00 a.m. The regular picturing hours license.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for the pleasure.
Now, are there any, it is open to the public, any comments from the public regarding the request, these two facilities, Dunkin' Donuts, to stay open if they wish to for 24 hours? Okay, then if not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it.
Motion approved, license.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Additional, additional hours.
Additional hours. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. Good luck. Okay, next, we're down to D now, Resolutions for Discussion and/or Action. And that's the first one. Mrs. George, if you want to just get started on that one?
The first one is affirming, dear Lord, the contract for winter roots.
Okeydoke. Mr. Waters, do you want to lead in on this one?
Sure, this resolution is for the purchase of road salt for the town roads. We're going to be piggybacking off of the master price agreement with the state. The price comes in at $56.25 per ton. And this is a resolution affirming that we're not actually awarding the contract. And this is a resolution affirming that we're not actually awarding the contract. This is affirming the piggybacking of the contract off the state price.
Okay, this is again, State of Rhode Island, Department of Administration, Division of Purchases, Master Price Agreement, we have that stated in front of us and they have gone out and done all their bidding, that's for sure. That's what they do.
Correct. The bidding information will be found through the state procurement website.
Okay. And this is Morton Salt, huh? Sorry, I know Morton Salt in Chicago, Illinois. They're, they're going to be busy maybe this winter. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve then.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Waters, so, have we taken delivery of the salt yet?
Come on up.
No.
I'm not sure if we've taken delivery or not. I would imagine we have, we've received an invoice that I'm holding off on paying until this is approved. So, we might be, the delivery might be picking.
Okay, and do we have any, well, do we have an idea of what the total cost is going to be because it's only the $56.25, sorry, per ton in the resolution? Do we know?
We don't.
Or approximately purchasing?
The town budgeted $140,000 for the year. Because every winter varies, we stock our salt dome at the beginning of the year and as we go through, if it gets lower, then we will order more. So, it varies based on the severity of the winter.
Okay, and then did we have any leftover last year?
Mr. McGee, do you want to come up?
I mean, it wasn't horrible winters, we usually get, had its moments.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, we used quite a bit of snow because we had a lot of ice last year, so it's also for ice control. We had probably about 250 tons that were left over that we mixed with the sand that we had on hand. And we anticipate to use somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 tons as we do most years. That's why we average the cost at 140,000. It could be more. And again, at that point, we'll see where we're going to be going over, we'll come back to the council and look for a budget transfer at that point.
Okay, and so, and I did email, in case anyone was interested, I did email Mr. Waters today about our sand contracts, because we haven't done those yet for the year, right?
It was done in early July.
For 2018?
27, 28.
Because I looked for them today, I couldn't find them in my file.
I'll have to give you a copy.
It was July? No, don't worry, I can look it up.
You folks approved it, it was all of our pipe and sand, winter sands approved, gravel, stone, castings. It's all done in July after we've done the budget.
Okay. I thought we had, because we only had Casellas on the list, is that right? Or we didn't have Casellas this year?
They didn't win it this year, there was-
That wasn't what it was, it was somebody else, okay.
Reynolds had it this year.
All right. Oh, okay. Oh, do they deliver, this Morton delivers? Okay, they do deliver.
Well, it's part of the product, yes, they do deliver.
Yeah, it's part of the cost.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else, sir? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I think we have it already.
Motion approved.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Hopefully, we'll have a good winter and not need a lot of it. Time will tell. All right, number two, on to D, please, Mrs. George.
It's a resolution directing the town manager to submit a rundown recreational development grant.
Okay. Mr. Waters, or who would you like to call up?
I'll call up both Ms. Wells and Ms. Bloom, if that explains anything about the grant. This is really a formality resolution as part of the application process. And I'll have them tell you more about it.
Okay, good evening.
Hi. So, this grant is the DEM's recreational development grant. It's a small grant, the grant amount itself is $100,000 or less and we plan to more or less max that grant amount out. I don't know if you caught, originally we planned, presented this to the planning board as a bike trails grant. I think we've decided to set that one to the side and refocus it. Raina had the idea to renovate the tennis courts at Payne Field, which are in really bad shape. Rework them into what she can describe as pickleball courts, which are apparently very popular with seniors. And that fits really well, I think, with the grant scope right now, with the baby boomer population aging, seniors are growing both in the state and in the town. And sort of combining that with a infrastructure that's really underutilized and in poor shape actually makes a lot of sense. So, all we need from town council actually is an approval to submit the grant and sign a resolution. Any questions?
Well, did you say pickleball?
I'll let her explain it.
I guess I'm a senior, but what is that?
It's a version of tennis, but it's a smaller court, so it's essentially a double the size of a regular badminton court.
It's going to be, okay, like a badminton game?
So, double the size, but it's tennis on a smaller scale, so there's less running and there's still a lot of activity. It also gives opportunity to get to fix the tennis court.
So, the term pickle's not like, somebody's in the middle, a pickle?
It was named after somebody's dog.
Okay, pickle, all right, I got you. All right, well-
But it's wildly popular.
I probably shouldn't have asked that question, all right. And this is, you know, the resolution is to allow you to make a request for the grant.
Correct.
And so, one, you may unfortunately not get it, or if you do, you'd have to come before us for the 20% match, is that it? Is that how it works, sir?
Well, we can, it doesn't have to be financial, it can be through labor.
Oh, I see, all right. So, I mean, would that just be between your two departments? You'd green light it?
Yeah.
Okay, within your budget?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions at the council regarding the request?
When does this have to be? When's the deadline to get the grant in?
Friday at 3:00.
This Friday?
Yes.
December 1st deadline?
So, you're all set to get it in for?
We'll make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, well, good luck, yes, Mr. Abusman.
My question, a couple of things, is it dill kosher or bread and butter?
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Okay. Just a question, you mentioned something about the bike path, is that where, because it says 20% local funds, is that some, is that where local, you know, or local match?
Yeah.
Well, we're just talking about-
You can move, please.
Sorry, you can use in-kind labor as your match. So, what is already even my time, Raina's time, her staff's time, for installation, for planning, all of that can count as match.
Okay, so, and then you mentioned like the bike path, was, what did the-
Well, we, we had approached this grant trying to think about amenities and spurs off the bike path, but we concluded that within the timeframe that we had, we just didn't have enough of the information to really have a competitive grant. So, we scaled it back into something that we thought fit the towns and communities.
Oh, okay, all right, so it was rather than continuing on with something, because it actually is off the bike path, you know, it's right there, so.
Right, right, true.
But, okay, great, thank you.
I have a comment also, all right. We do love grants, so, I mean, hope it's good work.
All righty, then, I guess that's it on the questions and I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good luck.
Thank you.
December 1st, wow. How many hours is that, Mr. Waters? I'm only kidding, all right, we'll get it done. And number three, D3, this is George, I know we've seen this before.
It's a resolution authorizing additional 130 thousand dollars in funds to the upper pond.
Mr. Waters?
This item was tabled at the last council meeting. Since that time, I sent out per Ms. Bacon's request and our unfortunate email mixed up the invoices to all council members for review. And if there's additional questions, I have my finance director, Mr. Tebow, as well as Mr. McGee, the public works director here. So, that's, would you be on the next one?
I assume that's the handout we were just handed on the official calls.
So, just to reiterate to the public, this is a resolution authorizing the town to make work mandated repairs to the Upper Pond Dam, which the town council at the time voted on the consent agreement. And this is authorizing additional funds to go towards the construction costs, because we went out to bid the first time and realized that we were, the amount of money that we anticipated and estimated, the bids we received were a lot higher. So, Mr. McGee, if you want to take over the history of it.
Good evening, once again. Going back in the history, when, 2014, 2015, Mr. Hoover at that time had a span of pricing, what the engineer anticipated the cost to be, between 350 to 750. We went for the joke upon, at that time, at 550, having just, you know, engineers' estimates. Well, we went out to bid, came in high, we went back out to rebid again with some structural changes to the bid. It still was higher than what the amount was for the actual construction, not counting the engineering, which was originally part of the original 550 estimate. So, Mrs. Bacon's comments at the last meeting was that we'd ask for an amount for contingency so that in the event, because it's a construction project, that if something comes up, that we have something to work with. At this point, Mr. Tebow and I had sat down, we're requesting council to look at reducing the request from the contingency, removing the contingency out. It's been such a span, we've actually had an opportunity to pay a couple more bills to Fussin O'Neil, so we're reducing the actual engineering cost, which was additional. So, we're looking right now to just ask for $105,000 to make up the difference for the construction cost and the engineering cost and the cost of issuance for the bond. And that's what's shown on that handout that you folks had this evening.
Okay, we have the handout and the only thing I say is the resolution still reads 130, so that would be changed to 105?
We would ask respectfully that you reduce that to 105 if you want, the majority of the contingency be removed.
Okay, Mr. Tebow, any additional words of wisdom for us before we consider this?
So, I think Mr. McGee covered it.
All right, and so, 105 is a good bet then, as far as what we need additionally?
Well, I defer to Mr. McGee on the construction cost, but as he has stated, the contingency is removed in the event that there, if there's future problems, then we could come back before the council requests, if needed.
Okay, I got it.
Mr. President, I just know, if we do have to come back because of something unforeseen-
Right.
Here's again, an additional cost of issuance, so that we would be looking at, again, probably another $12,000 if we had to come back. We're not anticipating that, the project's going on time and on budget at this point.
Okay, questions, any additional questions? If not, oh, yes, Mrs. Bacon?
I do, thank you. Thank you for sending the invoices over, I do appreciate it. I did take a look at them. I do have a couple of questions, though. I did review them. I don't know if you have the invoices in front of you. I do, I have invoice November 7th, 2016 and April 12th, 2017. They were both paid by, it looks like, November 13th, 2017.
Do you know what the invoice was, man?
Yes, one amount was for $833.43, that's the November 7th, 2016. The next one is an amount of $2,489.24 and that's dated April 12th, 2017.
Okay, I have both of those.
Okay, I was going through and it does have the upper dam project code on here. However, if you look at the top, it says Rhode Island Coventry dash year 13 annual report. And then that's dated the April 12th and then the November 7th, it says Coventry year 12 annual report, MS4 report. What are these?
Those, those are the annual reports that DEM requires on the status of where the project is going.
Okay, all right, so that's what that is?
Yes.
And then I have going back August 24th, 2015 and the other one is February 11th, 2016.
And do you have those a month later?
Yes, let's see, the 2016 is $3,971.79 and the one in 15 is $4,199.17. Actually, the invoice dates, I'm looking at the date that is on the top of, because it's a town of Coventry document, the invoice date is 1/11/16 and 8/7/15, I'm sorry.
So, it was 14/90/21?
No.
No. So, I'm sorry, just go over a few years here. Okay, any question, man?
It came out of, I spoke to Mr. Tebow today and it said, he stated, because I noticed the account number was different than all the other accounts. He stated that that came out of the general fund, these two bills. Could you tell me if that money has gone back into the general fund, if that bond has been issued? Did the money go back into?
I would prefer to say- Once the bond was set up, we transferred the expenses from the general fund to the bond.
Okay, terrific. Yep, no, and just one more, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sorry.
And after totaling everything, all the invoices, I must be missing some because the sheet that we received, it totals up that we've paid Fussin O'Neil since 2015 till now, 2017. I came up with $46,631.33, these were the invoices that were sent to council, but on this piece of paper, the summary of activity for the 2016 upper dam bond, it totals $54,153.17 that we've paid out to Fussin O'Neil. So, I was just trying to figure out discrepancy. I know it, I'm sorry.
I'll have to review that, but the spreadsheet may include some of the, you may not have all the invoices and not just the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Time difference.
Okay.
But I will get to that information and make sure we can, so that's some of the information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, then, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution with the changes of-
105.
105,000 at two different locations, one in the title and the second one, I've caught in section two, both on the front page, I don't, well, there's also another one, section one, now that I see that appear.
The resolution-
Santa Claus, you talk to the name for that?
105.
Okay. Do we get a motion to approve?
No, wait, section 10 also.
Section 10 is another one?
Yes.
All right, well, all right, you're right, this is the very, very bottom?
Yep. Yep.
Before, all right, so that's another one, so all four will be changed from a hundred and thirty thousand to one hundred and five thousand. I believe that's it. There's nothing on page three. Okay, with those changes, all in favor?
I don't believe we have a second, yeah. We've got a motion.
All right, I thought we, all right, second item?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, as you have it. Thank you, gentlemen, good luck. All right, that's it for D3. Now, E, general public comment. General public comment? General public comment, yes, ma'am? Come on up. And for the record, if you could be so kind, your name and address?
I'm Linda Morris, I live at Sixteen Mile Road, Coventry. I'm here because I'm concerned about the gun range, the proposed gun range, I suppose to go in. I didn't know about the change in zoning in the law until just recently, and then I noticed in two thousand twelve, I believe it was, in the chat, it was voted on two thousand twelve, June the twenty-fifth, that they decided it was okay to put it in a gun range, but I can't find anything about it in the minutes from that meeting. So I don't know when that actually came in, but that was a meeting on zoning. And it, it talks about, we are dealing with a, on a daily basis, with the reality of the zoning ordinances, and it says that you want it to be user-friendly. Well, user-friendly in our RR3 area, where there are a lot of homes with children and people who have PTSD and other issues, is not a very helpful thing to do.
Which minutes are you reading from?
I'm, I'm reading from the town council minutes on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, seven P.M. And I'm looking at the second page, where it talks about amendments to portions of the zoning ordinance, and I see nothing about zoning a rifle range, and that allowing a rifle range in that area, yet we have discovered it's part of the law for an RR3, that you can have a rifle range in those areas. I'm thinking it was probably intended just to be for an individual's use on their own property, and not for a commercial rifle range, as this one is intended to be, which will allow high-power rifles, and I left my pistol shell in my purse, but it's this long, and it will travel over three miles and still go through cinder block walls. So it's something pretty serious. I live a half-mile away from where the range is supposed to be, and I'm sure we're gonna have to just speak into the line.
If you could just turn that, why, you can move that up, but there you go.
Okay. I'm concerned about the noise that we're going to be experiencing every day, seven days a week. This is supposed to be a commercial range, and a commercial range is there to make money. So they're going to be selling memberships to people who want to use big caliber weapons so they can test them. It's supposed to be the biggest range in all of New England when it's done. The residents I've spoken to are totally against it, they don't want to hear gunshots all day, seven days a week. There's a range up in Burrville, it's called the Addieville Range. There's a lady who lives about a mile away, and she can't stand it, she can't even go out in her yard, she hears gunshots all the time. She's eighty, so it's really taking its toll on her. But it's also gonna take a toll on children, and it should have psychological effects. If kids hear guns all the time, repetition of those kinds of sharp noises, it's not a healthy environment. We've had a very quiet neighborhood, a very pleasant place to be, to live, and I think this is going to change things quite a bit if it does go in. It will change our housing values, they will go down. We have found information on the internet about that. We have also found a number of lawsuits against the gun ranges and the councils that allowed them to go in, and that's certainly a concern for people on the town council. I know you're not zoning, but I believe you appointed the people on the zoning board, so in a way, you're kind of, at least a little bit responsible for that, if it is approved by them. Let's see. I think the intent of the law was to have like a private range on a homeowner's land. And we hear gunshots now from private rangers, and one of which is the town, next town up, and it's about a mile away. But I hear the shots every weekend, he's out there practicing, but he doesn't practice all day, every day of the week. This commercial range will probably be seven days a week, and all day, and even at night, because they plan to have contests at night, which means multiple shooters, shooting at night, so we'll have a little more slam then. And I, I don't believe it was advertised in the paper that there was a change in the zoning laws allowing the gun range in. No one was aware of it in my area until just recently. And we would like to keep our area peaceful and healthy for the residents who live there, but I'd also like to keep it a safe place. And even a twenty-two can go over a mile long. And the Washington Oak School is just about a mile and a quarter, a mile and a half away from where these gun ranges are going to be. Children like to play outside during recess, and some of the bullets can even go through walls, like the fifty caliber I've got in my purse, and I might just show you, my left back there, is about this long. It looks like, you know, like an Afghanistan kind of weapon that, that they would probably use there, and I just can't see having that in your guy.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Mr. President, if I can make a comment, I don't usually comment on them, but we mentioned it earlier, I encourage you, because I've been receiving a lot of calls about this also, even in the district that I live, yeah, we all have. Go to the zoning board meeting, and express your safety concerns about this, and then they make decisions. Yeah, we do appoint a zoning board, but we're not responsible for the decisions. We, we do appoint the members to the board, it is their decision, but I can't urge you enough to have, the more people that show up and express their safety concerns, the better chance you have of that range not happening, okay?
I have a concern that there are people on the zoning board who are friendly with Mr. Miozzi and Mr. Blockbless, and I'm not trying to mispronounce his name, I'm just not sure how to say it. They are friendly with them, and they should recuse themselves and not vote on this issue because of that. So we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your, your time and concern.
Thank you for your time.
Commenting.
Thank you for your interest.
Yes.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Well, yes, I guess you're next, raise a hand.
Hi, everyone, my name is Charlotte Porter, I live at twenty-six, Sanders, Reco.
Use the mic, please.
I just got elected. We talked in ordinance a couple of years ago, and it was hours of operation from seven P.M. at night to seven A.M. There was not supposed to be any kind of operations. Well, right now, I'm getting older from the asphalt plants. There is something running constantly. I talked to Mrs. Bacon, I'm sorry, I was a little broke with you today, Mrs. Bacon, but it's really getting on our nerves now. It's, we can't open our windows at all. I have to have a little fresh air because of my COPD I have now. And...